Maybe they just want Trump to stay around so they can beat on him another four years.
If he would close his mouth, it would probably just win.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Delete his Twitter account.
Chris? Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We will call to order the meeting for the City of Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, August 12th, 2027 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Lord, we come before you tonight, and we always start off by saying, thank you for your love, for your forgiveness, and for your grace. You don't expect us to be perfect. Sometimes we fumble the words a little bit, but we always try our best. And we know that as long as we're trying to follow the example that you set for us and trying to do what we know is right in our hearts, then we know we're going to do the best job that we can for our residents, for our city staff, and for our strategic partners. We pray all these things in your son's names and all God's people said.
Amen.
All right, well, once again, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. We've got a couple of exciting things going on tonight, so we've got a little bigger crowd than usual. That's, I love it. I like it. We're going to move right into item five, which is our citizens forum. And I only had one resident sign up to speak at our citizens forum, but as y'all know, we do have a second citizens forum. So if you would like to speak on something that either agenda or non-agenda related, at the end of the meeting, you didn't get a chance to sign up for this one, feel free to. So with that, I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Alex Warmath. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. We just ask that you speak into the microphone, state your name clearly so the folks on YouTube can hear. Come on up, Mr. Alex. Yes, you can. Yeah, you don't have to wear your mask while you're talking to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to wear mine.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council and the mayor and appreciate all the great work you do. I have four points I'd like to make tonight in my three-minute timeline. First of which is, I want to really acknowledge and highlight the works of past councilmen and a former mayor to put us in a great position with regards to our city water supply and our sewer issues that we have today in Shenandoah. It's a wonderful situation not to have to be associated with the San Jacinto River Authority. Our checkbooks and the health of our citizens and our industry in our community are well-supported by the works of some of our great works for city fathers and councilmen of the past. Secondly, I'd like to strongly recommend that we move forward with supporting the requests for additional funding to support the funds needed to upgrade the water treatment facility and continue to maintain a water supply. Thirdly, I would strongly support that this gets done. The third thing on this matter is, it would almost suggest that we're having a 13% or 12% uptick for the citizens, and that's okay, on the rate for charges. That would kind of lead you to believe that we must have been underfunded for the past several years, or we wouldn't have to take such a big move forward. So I don't care to see us underfunded, something as critical as water and sewer, and this is a point. Last but not least, we really are in a great position here in our city. I thank our fathers and you guys of the city council for doing that. I would like to encourage one last item, which is four. The fourth point is, we're blessed to have a water supply that we control. We have wells that produce that. But one of those wells, and I'm in this business, will likely fail, and we don't know when. Can't predict when, could be tomorrow, could be five years, it could be, we don't know. But the meal ticket on that's a million and a half bucks or higher. And when it fails, we just lost a third of our water supply. Well, we've got backup plans, but those could be tomorrow, it could be five years. I don't know when it's going to be, and there's no engineer that can tell you that, but it will happen. And that's a problem. When we lose a third of our water supply just like that, that's a serious challenge. But if we have the funds available, we can snap to it and take care of it quickly. If we don't, then there's a delay, and we continue to pay the meal ticket for the high-expensive alternate backup supply. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration and appreciate your work.
Okay, well, with that, we will move into item six, which is council inquiry. Anybody have any, anything in this particular item? Well, then we will move to, I'm sorry, Ron, but it is my favorite agenda item. An introduction of a new employee. Kathy's going to introduce our new employee for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Andrea Williams. She's sitting back there. She's standing now. She is our new records manager, and she goes by Andy. She started with us on July 27th. Andrea describes herself as a songstress turned project manager with a passion for serving the local community. She's got 30 years in the workforce with 10 years working with local municipalities, 10 years working in healthcare, and another 10 years working with not-for-profit organizations. Her experience has allowed her to work in administration, facilities, information technology, ministry, projects, and records management. And when she's not working, you can find her spending time with family, volunteering, or taking a brisk walk. Andrea has already made huge strides in the few weeks that she's been with us, and she's a great fit. Thank you, Andrea.
That's great. Welcome to the city. Welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. Okay, almost just as good as that. Maybe, I don't know, maybe even better. I'm not sure. The next item, the next item, we get to, we're going to get to, that's right, no MDD report. Item eight is promotion of Officer Justin Atherton to sergeant, and I think Troy and Jake are going to handle that one. And I would just like to say while y'all were coming up, I received a very nice email about Officer Atherton, unsolicited, just somebody singing your praises and how lucky we were to have you in the department and how deserving you were of the promotion. So that's a pretty neat thing for me to get just out of the blue.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. We're excited. This is a great time for us and a great time for the department. So Justin's been with us since July of 2018, but he has a total of 14 years in law enforcement with almost nine as a police officer. A little bit about Justin's background, he worked, he's worked in gang intelligence. He's been a field training officer with a previous agency, and he is with us. A member of a, he's been a member of a SWAT team, detective and a supervisor throughout his career, so he comes very decorated to us. He looks forward to stepping back into a leadership role and continuing to share his experience with those around him. Justin looks forward to helping in, developing and expanding the training program with our department, which is a very big component of what we hope to build here going forward. And also, he spends his time off with his daughter who thinks her daddy is a spy. So we're excited. We're going to have Chief Dunlap. This is a neat part for us. Symbolically, he will be removing his officer badge and pinning his sergeant badge this time.
And we're going to need you to start wearing a tuxedo, apparently.
I haven't poked anybody yet, so.
It was the first. I got to tell you, though, when he said gang intelligence, jumbo shrimp popped in my head. It just didn't sound, didn't quite sound right. All right, congratulations again. Thanks. We'll move on to item nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding a water sewer rate study.
Motion to approve the proposed rate increase with the loan option.
So I have a motion by Councilman Ray Maker to approve the proposed rate increase with the loan option. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Brott. Do we have any discussion?
I think we've gone through this multiple times. We've listened to the town hall. I think it's, it's the minimum rate we need to raise to be fiscally responsible.
Well, I actually have a couple of questions on that. So I'm all in favor of making our enterprise fund fiscally responsible. However, I don't know that we have all the information or data that we currently need today. When we look at the rate study and what was presented to everybody earlier, it failed to mention a couple of things. One, two of the things that failed to mention was that the rate study did not include this year's budget, the 2021 items that MDD is paying for, which totaled almost a million bucks, I believe. The other thing it doesn't take into consideration is our impact fee study, which obviously is going to have a bearing on what these rates actually would be raised to. If we look at those two items in specific, then, as I believe Mr. Blile had mentioned, the loan itself would bear about $230,000 roughly a year in principal and interest, about half of what our deficit would be. However, when we take back into consideration the funding that MDD is putting in this year, unless council's going to choose to reject that, that's going to increase the reserves by about 700,000, meaning that in year two, we would already be beyond what we had intended for our surplus. So I would propose that since this year it's not a critical time for us, that we would reconsider the actual rate increases, because at this point, we're actually increasing it more than it should be, just based on those two things.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilman Fletcher. Anybody have any other discussion?
Well, Ted made some good points, but some of the MDD funding that he referenced is actually general fund expenditures, not water and sewer. And if the board, and I think the whole concept of MDD funding water and sewer projects is great, but TCEQ and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and all that cannot look or even anticipate funding from MDD to balance the fund. That's the point where I'm at. So, and if we have an impact fee study, that's just an augment what we raise, and if we have way too much money, we can always lower the rates. We can look at that in five years. There's nothing to say we can't save, because this is a projection. I understand his point, and they were good, but that's my side of it, or my thoughts.
And I agree with you, Councilman Brott. The fund doesn't need to stand on its own, but this isn't predicting what MDD would contribute. It's what, it's what it's already identified this year. And the projects I'm speaking of are specifically the ones that were identified in the CIP plan that this rate study was based on. I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, down the road, MDD will continue to contribute 70%. That comes out of the equation. I'm just talking about what MDD has identified this year in funding in the CIP projects. And those were the six items that were identified in, as crucial items as we went through the budget workshop right in the beginning. That's what we had our joint workshop about, and MDD said at that point, yes, we'll, you know, obviously, we didn't vote, but the consensus at that point was that those were the projects that they were looking to fund. So, and I can appreciate that, that the impact fee would augment based upon the rates that we have here, but that kind of defeats the purpose of the impact fee is because those that are adding more services to our city or requiring more services to our city or from our city are the ones that should actually be the ones that should pay for it, not back to our citizens or existing businesses that have been here contributing for long periods of time. So that's the purpose of the impact fee study. So it shouldn't augment it. And I beg to differ, and I had mentioned this to Councilman Cloud in our budget workshop, and he gave me a great example, and I'll play devil's advocate here with him. And what I had mentioned was, name one time the government has ever increased anything and then turned around and decreased it. And Councilman Cloud said, well, we did with trash. And he's absolutely right, but here's the concern. Nobody can say who's going to be here five years from now, and one of the arguments that's always proposed on this dais is, how do we prevent future council from taking away from the things that we've put into play regarding that five-year plan or that 10-year plan? And there's no way that you can do that. And to say that we're going to come back and lower these rates, Charlie, that's what you and I ran on three years ago, because that's exactly where council was three years ago, was looking to increase rates over a bond that we had money to pay for. So I appreciate exactly what you're saying. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think there's more options on the table than what we're considering. And I'm not saying MDD continued to pay 70%. I'm just looking at factually today what's been committed by MDD to this year's budget. This rate impact study is no longer valid based on that information. Because right off the bat, if the average is going to be increased by $5 in the middle, then right off the bat, it should be a 250 rate increase, not a $5 rate increase. But I can't sit here and support that because I don't have those figures to be able to say that's exactly what it would work out to be, no more than we can sit here and say, that $5 rate increase is exactly what we need to make sure that everything's taken care of. That's where I'm at. I don't know what the big rush is, what the big push is to try to get this done tonight when we have time to be able to take other things into consideration to come out with a study that's going to support what our CIP plan is as a whole without having a greater impact on our residents and businesses.
Well, I can answer that question, I think, and I don't mind asking John to clarify for me, but my understanding was that we needed to put something in place that would create a mechanism to start paying the loan payments by the time they kick in. That was my understanding, was that was why we needed, the timing of it was to pay for the loan payments once they kick in. Otherwise, we're going deeper in the hole.
Right. You won't qualify for the loan if you don't approve the rate study. You don't have a vehicle to pay it back, and that's, that's from your financial advisor. The other thing, I did remember what I forgot, Mayor. Sorry, I had to come back up here.
35 minutes later.
But, no, the gentleman that spoke about having a reserve fund, that's what I was going to mention. That is part of the study, and Councilman Fletcher said that. But the best practice is to have six months of reserve funds available, six months of the total. And so that's about $1.2 million. If the study is approved tonight, the increases, yes, Councilman Fletcher is correct, that reserve fund will get a head start instead of taking six, you know, six years, it'll be, or, yeah, six years. We've got $200,000 per year built into the study for reserves. So that was what I forgot to mention, but any other questions? Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we call the vote?
No, I'm not discussing yet. I have seen valid points from both sides of the table, and I don't mind telling you that I go back and forth on this issue. I, as a, as a businessperson, I totally support and appreciate the fact that the water and sewer fund should, you know, have a zero-sum balance, right? I mean, it should pay for, revenue should match expenses. As a resident, I say, well, wait a minute, you know, there should be some, some things that I enjoy about living in the city of Shenandoah, the unique makeup of it, and one of those should be that we benefit from the commercial tax dollars that are provided to help lower our cost of living. So I see both sides of it. What I will say is this, Ted, is I do think, it doesn't have to be five years down the road. Look, we can circle back a year from now, and, and I think we need to. I think we have to, I think we have to watch this like a hawk, because it's pretty apparent it's probably going to go through tonight. I think we need to watch it like a hawk, and I'm not a huge fan of having too much in reserves. You know, I talked to a mayor the other day, and he was bragging about how they had three years in reserves. I don't want three years in reserves. You know, that means I'm overtaxing my residents. I don't want, I don't want to put us in a situation either where we don't have enough money to handle a catastrophe, some sort of catastrophic event, but, but I think we have to, number one, watch it like a hawk, and then number two, we have to be very creative in what we do with those revenue funds if we see that it's starting, that they're starting to build up too fast. And so if we look up and we say, wow, we've, you know, this, we may have charged a little bit more money than what we need to, we have to figure out a way, a creative way, to give that money back to the residents. And not just, because you're right, government doesn't take money and then give it back. It just doesn't happen. So, you know, hopefully, whoever's next in line behind us has the same mindset, but I'm not a big fan, in fact, I'm not a fan at all, at all, of charging residents more money. I understand why, and I understand the need for it, but if, if it's one cent more than what we need to, then we have to give that one cent back somehow, some way. So that's, that's my two cents about that one cent.
I agree. I think, I think this is something that does have to be watched on a continual basis. I mean, the expenditures that we're looking at with all the infrastructure, I mean, it's a huge package. It's all of it.
And just because we have the money doesn't mean we need to rush out and go build something either. I mean, if, you know, I get that we're looking at, you know, years down the road and future development, and, you know, what happens when several multifamily residential complexes come up and Metro Park is completely built out. I get all of that, and at that point, then we may be at a saturation level where, yes, we do need to increase our capacity. But what I don't, what I really hope that we don't do is run out and go prematurely spend the money and build it before we need it. I would, I would rather be very strategic about that, if that makes sense. So, okay. Ron wants to hurry it, but he's tired of hearing me talk. Does anybody else have anything else?
Right, that's good points, but what scares me the most is that wastewater treatment plant going down. You take a digester goes down, a clarifier that goes down, and if, as Mr. Warmath said, a million and a half didn't go to fix that. You know what I mean? So here we go out with general obligation bonds and rushing around and doing all this stuff. Reactive measurement never is as good as a pro.
No, I agree with that, but just because we expand it doesn't mean that it can't still have a failure. We're not creating, we're not creating a redundant system.
That's the unknown. That's the unknown.
So, I mean, I mean, all we're doing is increasing capacity. We're not, we're not building a backup system, you know?
No, I know that. Right. We need a lot more of a raise increase.
Be a lot, be a lot bigger. You have something, Joseph?
Point of clarification. On the wastewater treatment plant, it's.
No. It's not expansion for additional development. It's actually getting us back to our permitted level. So it's, it's more of a maintenance and maintaining what we currently have rather than expansion. Just a point of clarification.
The $6 million?
$6 million, yes. Yes, sir. Yeah, these are, this is accumulation of projects that we've been looking at for years and years and years.
But I thought you had, I thought you had mentioned that it would increase our capacity back up to the 1.0.
So our capacity, when it was, as John said, when it was built, that was our capacity, was 1.3.
Okay.
But however, due to, basically, with all the water conservation that people are actually doing with water-reducing faucets, lower flushing, the amount of water to, the stuff in the water is decreasing. It's becoming more concentrated, more strong. So our treating capacity is not able to handle it like it used to. So these projects will get it back up to our permitted level.
So it increases, that's what I meant when I said increase its capacity.
Okay.
Increase it back up to that level.
I didn't want, I didn't want you, Mayor and Council, to think this was for new development. That's what the impact fees are going to be for. For new added development. That's what the impact fees will help cover.
So we're about down to 9, about 900,000? Is that what our current capacity is?
Yeah, 930,000, according to our latest study.
We should be about 1.3. That's what we ought to have at this plant, but we really only have about nine, what do you say, 900?
930.
930,000. So 6 million is just going to get us back to the 1.3 that we originally designed for.
That we designed it for, right.
And the biggest concern is what we're flowing on average is about 650. And there's thresholds, requirements with TCEQ. When you get to 75% of what you can treat, you have to start design or you're going to start getting fined. When you hit 90% of what you're actually treating, you have to be building, or you're going to get fined. And, or worse, you know, worse off, you're going to be putting sewage into the San Jacinto River.
But currently, but to be clear, currently, we're only at about 66%, and once we get our capacity back up to the 1.3, we will be at 50%.
Correct.
We'll be better than good. We'll be like really good at 50%.
We're at 66 and increasing, and when we hit 75, we're, that's the problem.
Right. When we get back to what our operating permit is.
But we're at 66, and when we spend $6 million, we're going to go back up to 1.3.
We're going to create a nice, healthy.
So we're going to be, we're going to be at 50% of our capacity. It's going to, we're never going to get to 90% at that point.
That's the, that's the hope.
That's the objective, yeah.
So I thought we were permitted for 1.3.
Correct. Our permit is 1.3.
So we're not decreasing it by 50% to 50%. We're already permitted for 1.3.
The problem is our treating capability is 930, which.
What we were just saying is, I mean, what Mary just pointed out was if we're at 66, and then now we go, we spend the 6 million to go to 1.3, then we're at 50. Well, we're 66% of 1.3 now, because that's what we're permitted for. Not correct? Please, John.
So what you can actually.
You did the math correctly, but the TCEQ's position on permits versus actual treating capacity, their position is you need to increase your treating capacity or you need to amend your permit down, which we would never recommend you do. So you really need to move forward with the project within the next five years. We're saying you probably should be in construction by, you know, 2023, and to get the capacity back up to the permitted amount. And then the future projections and the impact fee study, which we've got the draft completed, it can't be adopted for a year, but presumably next October, '21, council will consider it. But the, I said that wrong. It'll come to council October this year, but it can't go into effect for a year. Anyway, but the impact fees, as Joseph said, those are for future projects, developers to pay their fair share.
Sure, right. Have we, has anybody done a pro, and this would be kind of like looking into crystal ball, but has anybody done a pro forma or a projection of what, at the buildout of the city, what our capacity would need to be?
3 million gallons per day.
If we were completely built out?
Yes, I think. Derek can answer that. He can talk tonight, Mayor.
I just got Derek up to the podium.
The plant site, which you saw on the presentation, was designed to double the capacity. Purposely laid it out the way it is. You've got plenty of room to double. So the actual projected permitting. actual projected permitted amount will be 3 million gallons per day, more than double what it is permitted for now.
That's permitted.
But that's 10 years off or some distant future.
So that would be permitted?
Yes.
What would we actually need to be treating, though?
Well...
Have we done that projection? That's what I'm more curious of.
We have, we have done those projections, yes. I mean, once you're built out, the 75-90 rule can be waived. You can get a waiver from the TCQ if there's no future development, you know, you've built out your entire ETJ, your city limits, so the maximum that you will ever need is 3 million gallons per day, and you'll probably, you know, if you, if you run 90% of that, you're still okay, because you can't expand any further.
Can't expand any further.
Right.
Okay, that's interesting. I did not know that.
Any other questions? Derek would be glad to answer.
Okay, any more discussion?
So I just want to say one last thing, and that is thank you to staff and to Gylle for putting together the rate study. I know they've done a lot of hard work, and while I may not be in favor of a rate increase, I do understand why we need to have our enterprise fund stand on its own. I'm still going to vote the way I'm going to vote, because I think we need more information tonight for me to make that vote, only because I do not want to over, overbill our residents and businesses at present.
Duly noted. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Ramaker, we have a second by Councilman Brock, we've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1 to approve the increase in the rate as well as the $6 million loan. Okay, let's move on to item 10, which is discussion regarding a utility billing update and bill credit procedure.
Mayor and Council, this was brought up a couple of council meetings ago about viewing options to help, help incentivize residents to use more ACH draft payments, which are the least expensive, as well as paperless, I mean, paperless bills, which will also save the, the city a substantial amount of money. So I did do two different parts here. Tammy and myself are working on a utility billing update to be sent out to residents to get updated numbers, emails, secondary contacts, stuff like that. Currently, the last update we did was 2003, so sure, a lot of people's emails and phone numbers have changed. This is to help us in public works, if there's a leak, if we see a leak at someone's house, if there's an emergency, we can get in contact with them sooner than later. What we suggested for this was to send out an insert in the bill, as well as have it available online for them to fill out digitally, and then we would update our system with that. Once we receive that, they would get a one-time $3 bill credit, and that would apply the next billing cycle after their information is updated. What we think about time-wise, we give them until at least the end of the year to get all this done, hopefully get the mailer out mid-September, and then work on from that. The second portion of this agenda was a suggestion that Councilmember McLeod had made to sometimes, somehow incentivize residents to help the, the city save money, and we give some back. So ACHs, which is a bank draft, currently only costs us about 20 cents to process compared to credit cards, which is about 3%, plus the $1.50 insight fee, which is our bill pay site. And then also our e-bills, I mean, the e-bills would also save us money. Currently, we contract with Print &amp; Plus to print, mail, stuff inserts, stuff like that, and we currently, we, we pay about 13,000. We did do it in-house for years, it just was too time consuming and too much for staff to do. So the suggestion would be is that if they sign up for ACH payment and paperless bills, they would get a reoccurring $1 bill credit. If you look at the current rate proposal, minimum usage is a dollar increase, so you basically would be negating that dollar. So it helps out a little bit, and gives a little bit back to the residents, and I know that was a concern during the rate study, is that we want to give back, and we don't want to overcharge. So they help us, we help them, and that's, we think a very viable solution to that.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Lisa?
Yeah, fantastic idea. What were we looking at for, because one of the things we're talking about is, we talked about how much the credit card costs, mailing out a paper bill costs more than a dollar per bill, so we're saving a considerable amount of money, we're going to give a little bit of that, that back, and help out the residents, particularly those, those who are using very little water, will really minimize the, the impact of the rate increase. But what were we looking at for timeline and being able to implement ACH credit?
I can, I can probably put that on the mailer as well, the update, and then we can always just have, we're going to modify the applications to have that on there, so that it's automatically checked if they want it. We could probably send it out and, you know, start rolling on it October 1st. Well, it would be...
November bill.
November bill for October reads, yes.
Awesome.
And that would be the same way for the update. Even if we start getting responses earlier, we, we would have to probably just wait until that November bill, but they would be straight on there.
I think it's great.
And the reason why we did the e-bill and the ACH is because those are the only two things that they cannot change without, without us approving. So the problem is, is that you, you offer incentive, it would be kind of a, you know, crazy situation for us to check every month to make sure there's, you know, on a certain program or plan that we have in place, at least this we have control over.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Lisa. This doesn't need to come back for us to vote on, does it?
No, no, no action required. It's just, yeah.
Hopefully you'll get 100%, you know, discretion, that'd be nice to see.
Because, yeah, in addition to all the money that we're saving, we would actually save a lot of staff time...
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and dealing with it, so that's, that's above and beyond the direct cost we measure, so...
Bet you.
So, so the credit would be monthly or would be one time?
The credit for the, the combo of the ACH e-bill, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, be recurring every month.
Every month.
The $1.
Yeah, the $1.
The $3 a one time.
It's one time, just to incentivize.
Is that all, Ted? Any more questions? Okay. Okay, item 11, discussion of possible action to adopt the following resolution. Resolution approving the Montgomery County Emergency Communication District budget for fiscal year 2021. And I believe we have Chip in the audience, if y'all have any questions for him.
I do.
Yep, said, come on up then.
The training budget was kind of sizable. Have you considered having virtual training sessions?
We, uh...
Now, now that they're in vogue?
We, we sponsor some training of other agencies, so the, the four partner agencies that we work with, the Sheriff's Office, the Hospital District, Conroe PD, and Woodlands Fire, we, we also help train some of their people. We do do quite a bit of online training, and there's going to be, I think, some more of that coming up next year, yes, sir. We have, I did, I did budget it based on our historical, but we'll probably see some reductions. This year's budget's quite a bit of savings from training, because we have been doing more virtual.
I noticed there were $26,000 of allowances. What are the allowances for?
The allowances are, are, one, there's one allowance for, a car allowance for the executive director, and then cell phone allowances. We don't provide cell phones, we do a cell phone allowance policy for 11 employees.
I think you'd be more transparent if they just said your salary was larger, rather than the car allowance.
Okay.
I didn't see a breakdown by salaried positions, I just saw like the, the total. And I know you're looking, as you were a year ago, for adding additional space, why we're not looking at reusing existing space available in the county, rather than possibly buying land and building a new facility. I think a lot of us look at, say, the appraisal districts building and go, there's a big waste of taxpayer dollars right there.
We're looking for a very, in our building program that we are considering, specific property that would meet all the criteria, both to operate a, a PSAP, a Public Safety Answering Point, as well as a data center. And we're looking for electrical redundancy, we're looking for the absence of a lot of factors, like close to railroads, close to areas that flood, flight pathways, those kind of things, in addition to access to several data carriers. That puts us down to a small number of sites. Looking at addition, at existing facilities is something we definitely are considering as well.
Any other question? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Brock to approve. Do you have a second? Do you have a second by Councilman Grisby? Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion to approve carries 4-1. Thank you, Chip, appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to item 12, which is discussion of possible action regarding the appeal of an administrative or interpretation decision at Lot 61, Block 14, Shenandoah Valley, Section 3, which is 702 Rosewood Drive.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item is regarding a residential permit application to construct a 12-by-16-foot pergola in the side yard at 702 Rosewood. The reason this item is before you tonight is specifically due to its location on the property, being that it's proposed to be constructed in the side yard. Section 5.7.8 of the Integrated Development Code provides a definition for accessory buildings, and states that those accessory buildings should be located toward the rear portion of the property. It does not provide an alternative definition for other types of structures. Based on the definition, pergolas do fall under that category. In this case, the way the home is constructed, it does not have direct access to the rear portion of the property, however, it does have direct access to the side yard. It, excuse me, the, the pergola as proposed will be behind an existing fence, and it does meet the setback requirements for the property as it's zoned, so...
So then it's outside of the IDC? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood your question, sir.
So you said it, it fits in the setback and all that, but yet it's outside of the IDC?
Yes, so, so for side yard, so for side yard structures, it meets the setback requirements for a structure that's going to be built in the side yard, however, it also falls under the accessory building definition of the Integrated Development Code stating that those types of structures should be located toward the rear portion of the property.
Hence this executive decision.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and let me say, it's not clear that a pergola is an accessory building. The IDC does not address pergola at all. IDC does not have a definition of patio, other than in calculating non-pervious material. The IDC, if this falls within the IDC, the, and if the building official turned down the decision, the, the resident would have the remedy of paying $1,200 and seeking a variance and going, spending a month at planning and zoning, and then coming to city council with whatever that recommendation is. Because it is not clear that a pergola actually is governed by the IDC, I talked with Danny, and the other remedy that the IDC allows is for him to decline the request and, and for the resident to come directly to city council, appealing his decision. And so that's why the resident is here tonight, one of those two ways to get to city council. And so that's why you're addressing this or considering it tonight.
So it's not a variance? So therefore the $1,200 doesn't apply?
That's right. Because we elected to bring this to city council in this method, there's no fee, it's, and it goes directly to city council.
So, but there's no P&amp;Z review at all? Even if, even if we're waiving the fee?
Well, you as a city council always have the authority to say, we want to send it to planning and zoning and get their opinion. Then you're not invoking that variance thing, you're, you're just seeking the advice from planning and zoning.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this appeal.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Fod to approve, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
First, let me say thanks, Danny, for bringing this to us and, and working with the homeowner to where we don't have to, so they don't have to spend $1,200 to figure out what to do. Secondly, if I'm thinking of the right property, the way this property's actually built, the front of the house or the front door actually, technically, the pergola would be in the backyard, because the front door's on the other side of the house, if I'm thinking correctly, and there is no access to what would be the side yard, which would be where the garage is built. Is that correct?
It's, it depends on your terminology, so rear portion of the property and backyard aren't necessarily the same things, but you are correct in that there is no access to what we would consider the rear portion of the property, as it's worded in the IDC. The, the only access would be what is considered, in this case, would be the side yard, so there is no...
There is no back yard.
There is really no practical alternative to constructing it in the rear portion of the property as the property is laid out.
Yeah, again, I would echo Ted's comments there. I think this was the, the ideal solution, it's just, it's just a nuance of the IDC, otherwise it wouldn't, we wouldn't be here. A pergola doesn't have a covered roof, it doesn't have any plumbing, it doesn't have any electrical, it, you know, we're, we're just asking to build it so that it's built right, and this is exactly what the resident's doing.
Well, and it's behind the fence.
It is behind the fence.
It's behind an existing fence.
Behind an existing fence.
It's not like it's sitting in the front yard.
Exactly. Yes, sir, and to follow up on Bill's comment earlier, the, the IDC is pretty vague in its definition, it doesn't specifically reference pergolas at all, and it doesn't provide any alternative definitions for any other type of structure, so this is what we had to look at it as.
So this is one more, one more instance of a long list of instances we need...
One more item to go in the suggestion box, yes, sir.
Well, yeah, that's where, that's where I am. So we need to improve the, the process here, so number one, then, I like to get P&amp;Z's opinion on something like this, so we need to have something that waives the fee, or there's no fee, period, for a resident to, to bring it to them. They're not a commercial entity, so they don't need to bear that burden, but then to make sure that P&amp;Z is aligned with that, as well as the IDC, so it was a good opportunity for us to at least bring that up.
And I, I would echo that, because I believe that, that it's important for P&amp;Z to be involved in every aspect of these types of situations, because, you know, it improves their ability to, to move forward as we address the IDC in the future, and, you know, I can, I can speak from experience, being on that board, we had a lot of times where something would happen in the city, and planning and zoning would say, wow, wow, how did they, how did that happen? Where did that building come from?
Yeah.
We never saw it. So I think it's important that, that we utilize that board for what they're for.
I agree with that. I think if you asked them tonight, they'd probably all say, yes, in the future, let's do that, don't make the homeowner wait another month before they...
Right, I agree, I agree.
On this particular case, but I think in the future, yes. The more things we can get that fall into their scope, the more things we can get their, their judgment and opinion on, the better.
Agreed.
The more sets of eyes that look at something.
Work on creating that mechanism so that we, you know, don't burden the, the homeowner, but do provide, you know, as many people as possible, you know, the opportunity to take a look at it, make sure we're doing it the right way, and that we can infuse that information into the IDC in the future, so...
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Hopefully we'll get an invite to the pergola at some point.
Please be a part of it. Please be a part of it. A pergola party.
Okay, item 13, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the 2020 Tax Rate. Hold on, I think Lisa's got...
Down boy.
Just, I just want to put some background, because the tax laws did change this year.
No.
So, yeah. So, what was...
Whoop-dee-whoop opposed again, right?
What was the effective tax rate? Now called the new revenue rate, and as you can see in my agenda, totally forgot to change those. And then you have your voter approval rate, which was the rollback rate. So this year, MCAT actually didn't get all the protests done in a timely manner, so they gave us an estimate of appraisal. I'm waiting on T.M.R. to give me an answer back on when we're actually going to see the final, but we're going to use that as our base right now. Also, so the new revenue rate is what the rate is if you take your last year's assessments and you figure out what the rate should be to generate new revenue. And that, this year, is .1807, which is higher than what we currently have at 1799. At the budget workshop, the consensus was, I think, unanimous to remain with that 1799, and that's what I will be putting in for the adoption next.
But we're not, to be clear, we're not voting on 1799 tonight.
We're just voting on to not go above that 1207.
We're voting on not going above the effective tax rate.
Yeah, the new revenue tax rate.
Right, okay.
But just, I just want to put that background in there, so we are all clear for the next meeting.
Just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a tax rate no higher than the new revenue rate.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Brought. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 14, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the 2020 Third Quarter Budget Amendments. Just you, Lisa.
Yeah, I just didn't know, okay.
I always like a little brief.
I know, I just didn't want...
People watching YouTube, or, you know, it's, one of the things I used to hate was when, previously, we might call out an item, and then everybody just votes on it, and I feel like there's, you know, every now and then, people are like, "What did they just vote on?" You know, yeah. I think a little, I think a brief little explanation doesn't hurt.
So, Mayor and Council, this is the third quarter budget amendments for the current budget year. If you look, there are some for general funds, some for water sewer. General fund is to replace two body cams that have no longer worked, to pay for their equipment services for our current Pollock Works project manager, and also to reflect those fire review inspection costs that we were paying the county, and what we were bringing also in from the consumer to cover those costs, which is a pass-through fee. But just to keep everything, you know, transparent and clear, I just wanted to bring that to get approved as an amendment. For water sewer, it's to act on a warranty that we were offered for some of our meters that are not currently working with the AMR. It's to switch them out to the digital, and to also switch out the antennas, the new antenna system that is now being used with our system. We met with Ferguson, it was a very, very good deal, so we jumped on it, and we just want to reflect it in the budget now. I will note that on the agenda item, those two little small, just summary graphs, it carried over an extra $30,000, which it shouldn't have. So you're only approving the $10,750 for water sewer budget amendments.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Council McLeod, you going to say something?
Just had a question about the watch guard body cameras. Are those regularly, like, what's the lifespan, what's the normal lifespan of those? And is that a normally budgeted item that we replace on some frequency? Maybe Chris knows that.
Well, we don't typically replace them. It's kind of just through attrition. When we, of course, buy a new vehicle, it's outfitted with the watch guard, it comes with a body cam. We do a one-year warranty. What we found was that we were spending a lot of money on hardware warranty. To be quite honest, watch guard doesn't make it favorable to keep the hardware warranty. They actually run it up on a sliding scale, so each year, like, if I bought a body cam today, next year it costs more warranty, a third year it costs half the cost of the replacement of warranty. It just didn't make any sense.
Sure.
We're spending $13,000 to save two, which is roughly what we spent to replace some items. So we opted not to carry the hardware warranty.
Yeah, no, and I understand the hardware warranty. I mean, I think we've had that conversation. The question was, this is not a normal budgeted item, or do we budget with the idea that we're going to have to be replacing a couple watch guard cameras every year, in addition to the new ones we're buying?
We do not budget for replacements.
That's what I'm thinking, that maybe...
Well, we do have equipment replacement.
Well, but you're heading there, you're heading in the direction...
Yeah, we don't actively replace watch guard, because we're adding new every year. We just phase the old out, because once it reaches third or fourth year, it's beat up, it's pretty much, especially the body cams are phasing out.
So I think we're mic-ing with this, what's our historical turn rate been? And then should we start just putting that in the budget? Saying, "Okay, we know every year we're going to have..."
Okay, I'm clear. Well, it goes in spurts, but historically, we haven't had much of an issue. We usually get repaired wherever we need repair, we can get the cameras repaired, put them back in service. I think this year, I think we lost three cameras, body cams, through different incidents. But we can certainly adjust that approach. You know, early on, we thought a better approach, just to, you know, because we're adding them new every year, we technically should be phasing old ones out, and we would be keeping up with that attrition rate. That was the theory. If the department feels like we want to start adding some new ones to the budget, we can certainly do that.
I think you just need to look at it, and if it's, you know, we're having to pick up an additional one or two cameras consistently every year, then let's just start budgeting that in the budget.
Well, I will say one thing, though. If we do replace the cameras, let's say, if I let a camera go out of warranty, it's half the cost to replace it, an out-of-warranty replacement than it is to buy a new one. A new camera, body cam's $995, a replacement's $450. So it's more advantageous for us to break one and replace it on the out-of-warranty replacement.
Just because we budget the money, doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Yeah, exactly. There we go.
Well, and to that point, I had gotten with the department, police department, about them increasing their equipment maintenance budget for this type of scenario.
Perfect.
Council, since the fire inspections have come up under this agenda item, I'll update you all that we do have a strong candidate for that position now. It's taking a little bit longer, because this candidate also is a licensed police officer, and he would like the city to hold his commission for reserve. And that's a little bit more extensive background check, so we're going through that process. We have a phone interview with him, I believe, on Friday, so we're getting closer.
Good.
Good news. Good news.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Council McLeod to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Christie. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 15, 2021 Budget Discussion. This is for the workshop file. This is obviously a discussion-only item. I don't think we have to go line by line. If somebody, if you just, if you have something you want to bring up or talk about, I think this is open discussion, so fire away.
I'm just going to make some notes real quick. That water sewer deficit will change now with the adoption of the rates. Also, I did send you guys an email, I did talk to Questica to try to see if we can get that third module as some kind of savings, and they did come back and gave me good options, so that the year-one price is not heavy-loaded, and it would only increase the contribution from each fund $500 this first year. So if that's the route that we want to go...
So it'd be 23 rather than 22.5?
It'd be 24.5. Well, it's five per the four, so it'd be 2,000. So if that's, you know, an option, that's okay with everyone.
I'm good with that. I think it makes sense to roll it out. I mean, I know there's going to be a learning curve, it's going to take probably a year before you're fully using all the different packages, but...
Yeah.
Does that bring you up to speed, I mean, as far as, that's the total package then?
It's, the three modules are offered with, yeah, other than the transparency module, which is a whole other beast. But this personnel module will help Jackie and Lacy with personnel budgeting every year. And then if Kathy came to me tomorrow and said, "Hey, if we want to hire someone at this rate, this step, what's our total cost?", we can have that all pre-built into there, and we just hit a button.
Very good.
So that is, I think there's the only two I wanted to point out. So what we have on schedule is that next meeting, we will adopt the tax rate and the budget.
Provided T.M.R. gets you the information.
I think, I kind of talked to some other cities, and they're just, you know, they've already pretty much adopted, but that estimate's probably very close. You might be off a couple thousand dollars, which isn't going to break us, you know. Our rate's low, it's so low that, yeah.
So are we going to figure out all the capital projects and everything?
Yes, so, on the agenda currently, MDD is contributing 70% of MCC, the ACP Warline projects, and then the I-45 resource, which is also, that's an MDD project, and then their funds for the Questica. They will be meeting at the 26th before your meeting to kind of go through those priority-two projects.
They've got to vote on it.
So depending on what this project, what they vote on as priority-two projects, those might be something that we can bring back mid-year, once we get a better idea of revenues and re-explore those, if they do not fund them.
And then the transfers from all the funds to...
Yes, and then it will be all updated. But they had guaranteed those projects at least, so.
Anybody got anything else?
Motion to approve.
Oh, it's just discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay.
Will approve next time.
Oh, it's 16, that's right.
All right, let's move on to item 16, then, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the 2019-2020 General Fund Surplus.
It's my agenda again. Mayor and Council, this was discussed at budget workshop and previous to that as well. This is to create a separate fund to place what we would consider our reserve, our 180-day operating expenses, to make it a little bit more transparent that that is our reserve, so that we don't base it on cash flows.
That money set aside for a rainy day fund?
Yes. It would be, so when I looked at this year's budget, if we did a day operating, about $26,000 a day. So that's how I got that 4.68 number that would be put into that reserve fund. And then every year, at the end of the audit, or in, you know, March, when we approve the audit, we can see what our surplus was over budget, and then we can also allocate that to that, or we can also explore a capital project improvement fund. The only problem with the capital project improvement fund, it's now restricted for capital project use and purchases.
And we can also just leave it in surplus.
Yeah, it's up to you, yeah.
Really, the point of this, I'm going to interject a little bit, is to create a differentiation between surplus and reserve, so you know what you're spending.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to approve our reserve fund and to transfer the $4,680,000 from our current cash into that reserve fund.
Second then.
And the creation of the fund. You have to have that as well.
Yeah, I did the creation, oh, creation of the fund?
Yeah, I have to, yeah.
Creation of the, all right.
I have a motion by Council McLeod to create the fund and transfer 4.680 million dollars out of the general fund into the general fund reserve policy, that would be reserve funds.
Reserve fund.
And I'm second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
So what is the, so $26,000 a day operations, is that, what does that actually break down? I mean, as far as per department, is that every department?
Yeah, it's a general fund. So it's your debt service, it's, you know, it's all, what do we transfer to debt service?
Everything excluding, so that would be CDB, MDD would not be included.
We can always go, we can always create, well, MDD typically, you wouldn't have a reserve.
Right.
But for CDB, water sewer, we can create that as well, that type of fund, so that we know. CDB has quite a reserve.
Water sewer, CDB.
So...
Would these be taxable accounts for work?
Currently, we'll just have them in Wells Fargo, for the time being.
Which is fine, I just...
For the time being, because interest rates are so low right now, the more money we have in Wells Fargo to offset our fees, the better. And then, once things start bouncing back, we can invest, that's no problem, into the taxable fund.
So that does not include water and sewer?
No.
Perfect.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to create the fund and transfer the money. Item 17, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt the Following Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, Appointing a Records Management Officer for the City of Shenandoah, Texas.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to appoint. I would assume Andy?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 18, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Trash and Recycling Rate Increase.
We're making a motion to approve, since we kind of have to.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion by Councilman...
To the increased water rate.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to increase, to approve. I have a second by Councilman Ramaker. Sounds like we're going to have some discussion.
This is per contract. We have to abide by the contract.
It is by the contract, but I will go on the record as taking this opportunity to state that I am not at all happy with Republic as a service provider for our trash service. And I don't mind saying that, open on the record, in the minutes, if somebody's watching on YouTube. They are not providing what I think is a good service to our residents, and we pay them a lot of money each year to do it, so I would...
Three years left on the contract, is that right?
2025.
Oh, a little bit longer, sorry.
I guess the part, then, is like, why does it have to always come back to us if it's part of the contract, and we already approved the contract?
Because it's a yearly thing.
By ordinance.
I mean, can we get out of the contract?
No, I think it's a valid question.
There's always litigation on, which I'm definitely not for.
All right, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 19, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes of the June 10, 2020, and the June 24, 2020, Regular Meetings.
Make a motion to approve them, Ms. Redd.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brought. I'm second by Councilman Ramaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to our second Citizens Forum, item 20. Didn't have anybody sign up, but if anybody would like to speak? No? Okay, well, then we will move to item 21, which is our City Administrator Updates. That's Kathy.
Council, I have just one or two, just a reminder that the TML conference is not going to be in-person this year, they've canceled that part. You should have received an email. You will have the virtual option. I believe the registration is the same. I know that TML also allows a partial attendance at a reduced rate. Registration won't be open until September 1st, so as we get closer, we'll give you additional information, and you can decide whether or not you would like to register for the virtual part. Secondly, there's been one or two questions about the activity at the end of Holly Hill, that is the dirt that was placed there being spread around, so that's all that is. And that's all I've got.
Kathy, I had an email from...
Item 22, which is Council Inquiry. We'll start with Councilman Christie.
So I received an email from our Building Inspector today stating that the apartment complex that's attached to the Lifetime is wanting to move to brick on the exterior as opposed to the stucco. And there was a question as to whether or not it needed to be something that goes to P&amp;Z, or something that comes to, you know, my comment, too, was basically, that's an improvement. I like the fact that they're moving to brick, I mean, if that's their intent.
their intent. But, uh, I definitely wanted just to make sure that all of council and, and P and Z are made aware of those kind of changes as they take place, so.
And the mayor did request that this come back through.
Okay.
So you'll, you'll be fully advised.
Okay.
Through P and Z?
Correct.
They're going to go through P and Z with it? So, okay.
Now, having said that, I don't think this was, this was probably predating this, uh, this PDD was probably predating the state's decision on building materials. So I don't think we wrote anything into that PDD, did we?
No, there wasn't anything.
No, but I, I, I don't think we'll have an issue with them coming through.
I don't think we will either. I, I, I want them, number one, just to be able to do a very good job of letting us see, because again, you're just changing the scenario, you know? And I go back to what Mike and I have talked about a million times, is we bend over backwards to accommodate people that, don't come back and change the scenario on us, you know? Um, we need to, we need to make sure that if we do another PDD, that we definitely start writing some language into it that gets us out of the PDD if the PDD changes. Um, but, uh, but I just want to make sure that they understand, uh, you know, come to council, give us a good presentation, let us see exactly what's going to change. And, uh, just so, you know, again, we've done our part, just want them to do theirs. So I think it will be an upgrade more than likely too.
Agreed, agreed. But it, but I think it's...
Still needs to come back though.
The transparency is...
The transparency.
That's ultimately the goal, so.
Yes, hundred percent. Anything else while we're on you?
Nope, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Rainmaker?
Yeah, on the, uh, Holly Hill, uh, I went out there and I walked it just to see how things were going. And there is a, a red string line. What does the red string line indicate?
So we had wild engineering come out and mark the areas, uh, basically the ridge areas, the fill zone, so that as, um, my staff moves the dirt into those areas, it's not going to affect drainage outside of the site.
Okay.
So it's going to, it's going to keep the drainage flowing. Actually, they'll probably end up flowing a little bit better and you won't have standing water like we're dealing with now. Um, but it's to ensure that we don't push off any of that drainage onto the neighbors.
Yeah, I kind of thought that's what it was for. I just wanted you to bear in mind that. Thank you. That's it?
Councilman Fletcher?
I'm good.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Councilman McLeod?
We're all good.
Very good. Uh, I would just, would like to say that, uh, Lisa, I saw your email on the tax increase. Good job. Way to keep us in the positive.
Good job.
We, we're, we're holding you accountable to our tax revenue, by the way. Um, do we have any, uh, yeah. Do we have, uh, do we have any updates that we know of, Ms. Debbie or Kathy or anybody that we've had any businesses or restaurants that have either reopened or had to shut down very recently? I know we had a bunch that we've talked about time and time again. But the reason why I bring that up is because, um, Killens caught my eyes. Uh, they, they looked like they briefly opened up and then they closed back down again and now there's something going on out front. And so just curious if, if there's any updates on any of our businesses that we know about that...
Justice is, is shutting down.
Justice is shutting down, okay.
Um, Star Mart announced today that they are going to close eight hundred stores. So we just don't know.
We don't have partial, okay.
Um, not yet. Um, but other than that...
GNC is, huh? GNC is closing too. And there's, uh, I know Men's Warehouse is closing several locations, um, initially a small, smaller number and then eventually much larger. So not sure yet if that'll affect us.
Yeah.
And then, uh, so as far as the restaurants go, some opened back up fully when they were allowed to and then they, they closed to dine in because it just wasn't making sense to keep, keep it open for dining. But they're still offering the, uh, delivery and pickup and that, that sort of thing. Good Company, uh, temporarily closed. We don't, we don't know anything about the future of that.
The Cantina?
No, the barbecue, sorry.
Oh, yeah, the barbecue's been closed, yeah. That's interesting. And I noticed Casa Medina opened back up.
They opened back up, correct.
Um, I'm trying to think. I thought I saw somebody else that had opened back up. But okay, I was just curious. I, that caught my attention, so thought I would ask.
And John and Stephanie are, are trying to stay on top of that and, and update us with any, any news.
Okay.
So we'll put it out too if we get it.
Very good.
But the Learning Store has been busy. I was just over there the other day, that, the teacher store, the Learning Store.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
When I was at Bath and Body Works, it's, this is constant stream through that store. So, good.
Yeah, I can imagine. Um, I would like to reiterate one more time, um, how appreciative I am of council, uh, staff, um, bile and associates for, uh, indulging us with the town hall meeting. I know that's an extra hour, hour out of everybody's schedule. Uh, trust me, I missed dinner with my wife and kids. So not the best, uh, time to, um, have to be up here, uh, considering the turnout and the feedback. But that, that's our jobs, right? Our jobs are to be as transparent and as approachable and open as possible and regardless of the outcome. And so I'm glad that we did it and I appreciate everybody, um, uh, you know, putting the effort that they did into it. Joseph, great presentation. Um, so thank you very much for that. And I think that, that, you know, we can answer any questions that we get asked now. So other than that, thanks everybody for coming tonight and, uh, we will adjourn the meeting at eight sixteen PM. Thanks, everybody.